All right, we will now begin the January 2nd, 2025 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, the pre-meeting for this. Do we have someone to go over the agenda this evening?
Good evening, everyone. Go ahead and get started here, get the PowerPoint pulled up. Our first set of items tonight, old business items 1A through 1H, so quite a few items. This is a request for a rezoning, preliminary plat for conditional use permits, and a site plan for a sports facility, hotel/extended stay, a retail building, and a food truck park. That's all located at Bryan Road and Veterans Memorial Parkway next to the Justice Center. So the applicant is proposing to rezone the property from standard C2 zoning to C2 with the sports tourism overlay district. That was approved several months ago, if you guys remember. The preliminary plat will split the main 20-acre site into about seven lots. The lot proposed for the hotel is on the north side of Veterans Memorial Parkway, so it's a little separate. It's on the opposite side of the street. That lot is not being split. That will stay as it is. The four conditional use permits for this project, they are for a banquet hall, indoor recreation, the food truck park use, and then the sale of alcohol by the drink. So first of all, the banquet hall is located in the main sports building on the second The applicant has said that that will only be used when the food truck park is closed, like in the winter months when it's too cold to be outside. It is designed to accommodate up to 300 people. The next conditional use permit is for the indoor recreation. That's for the Dogwood Social House. That is being moved from its current location into this proposed building. The food truck park, that use requires a conditional use permit. It'll have a small building with a bar and restrooms, and then there will also be a stage amphitheater and a screen for concerts, you know, movie nights, things like that. As stated previously, the banquet hall and the food truck park will not be open at the same time, so something to keep in mind with that. And then the last conditional use permit is for the sale of alcohol by the drink. That will cover the sports facility concession area, the Dogwood Social House, the famous Toastery, which is another tenant, another restaurant in the building, and then the food truck park. All of those will be required to get their own liquor license. Okay, so for the site plans, or the site plan, I guess just one site plan. The first portion of that is the hotel/extended stay on the north side of Veterans Memorial Parkway. It'll have a dual branded building. One will be a hotel, the other the extended stay. Those do have a shared lobby. In the sports tourism overlay, the extended stay is a permitted use and not a conditionally permitted use, so the requirements in Section 400.330 do not apply to this one. The building will be 119,000 square feet. Each floor is about 29,800 square feet, and there are a total of 167 rooms. The next part is the main site of this development. That'll have the sports facility, the retail building, and the food truck park. There'll also be four outlots that are reserved for future development. The main building with the sports courts is 160,000 square feet. Like I said, that'll have the sports courts, which are two seven-on-seven sized turf soccer fields, so they're not full-size, a little bit smaller, eight basketball courts, and then those eight basketball courts can be converted into 16 volleyball courts. Additionally, there's the lobby, the concession area, three party rooms that could be rented out, and then two outdoor patios. That building will also have the banquet center on the second story, like I said earlier, and then the Dogwood Social House, the famous Toastery Restaurant, and then another vacant tenant space. The retail building is 40,000 square feet. At this point, we don't know who any of the tenants are going to be for that. And then the food truck park, or the Bourbon Garden, as the applicant has been calling it, will have a 3,400-square-foot building, and then, like I said, with the small amphitheater and stage, will also have some amenities that are required with the sports overlay zoning district. We'll have koi ponds, outdoor games area, and then different seating areas. A parking study was provided for the main site. The code would have required a total of 1,161 parking spaces. However, during the parking study, they determined that 788 parking spaces would meet the needs of the site. That's with businesses having different operating hours where they could utilize parking at different times. People that are traveling to participate in any sports tournaments will be required to stay in these hotels, so people that are parked at the hotel, you know, could walk over to the sports facility. If they're at the sports facility, they might then go to Dogwood, so there's some overlap In addition to that, they are working on an agreement with the city to utilize parking at the Justice Center for an additional 94 spaces. And then they're also converting where the trash and recycling bins are to another parking area, so they're doing quite a bit with the parking there. So all of that considered with the shared parking with the city, they're looking at about 843 spaces, so that is over what their parking study recommends. And then one other thing to note, the hotel site does meet the requirements of the code, so that is covered. In addition to the parking study, there was also a traffic study that was completed for this development, identified several improvements to be made. Staff is still working with the developer and the traffic study consultant on a couple things. In the packet, you have the original traffic study, some of questions, some of staff's questions, and then their responses that we received not too long ago, so we're still working through that. We have placed a comment or a condition on the site plan that the developer will need to follow the needs, or the recommendations, excuse me, of the traffic study, and then the recommendations of the city's traffic consultant. Okay, so for the rezoning, staff is recommending approval with no conditions for the preliminary plat. We're recommending approval with the condition to provide updated covenants and restrictions for the site. There's covenants in place already for the Justice Center, so they'll need to update those to include this portion of the site. For the conditional use permit with the banquet hall, we're recommending approval with our standard conditions and the condition that the banquet hall shall only be allowed to operate when the food truck park is not in use. We are recommending approval of the conditional use permit for the indoor recreation with our standard conditions, and we're recommending approval of the conditional use permit for the food truck park, excuse me, with our standard conditions and the condition that the food truck park shall only be allowed to operate when the banquet center is not in use, and then to meet the requirements of Section 400.330A10. That outlines some requirements specific for food truck parks, and we are also recommending approval of the conditional use permit for the sale of alcohol by the drink. And finally, recommending approval of the site plan for the sports facility and the hotel with some of the following conditions. Address whether site distance is an issue on the hotel site. If so, show or provide easements, provide a street view from the entrance looking north, remove all obstructions from the line of sight if needed. Retaining wall separation must be two times the wall height. Based off the revised plans, retaining walls would need to be separated by 22 feet. That's on the rear of the hotel building. They have a couple pretty tall retaining walls right next to each other, so they'll need to adjust those. The construction site plan shall address the findings, comments, and recommendations of the traffic studies submitted by CBB and the staff memo dated 12/20/2024, and provide utility hookups for the food trucks per Section 400.330A10. So that was a lot of information. Here's what the site plan looks like. This here is the main building. The retail building is over here, and then the food truck park down here. These are the four outlots that are going to be undeveloped for now and can come in later. And then up this way is where the hotel site is located, so they do have sidewalk connections to allow for people to walk over to help kind of alleviate some of the parking needs on the main site. Here is the floor plan. So like I said, the two turf fields, eight basketball courts that can then be converted into 16 volleyball courts, lobby concessions, outdoor patio, and then the other tenant Here's the rendering. This is looking from Veterans Memorial Parkway, from one of the outlots. And then this is just the other end of the building with the famous Toastery and the Dogwood Social House. This is the Bourbon Garden, and you can see the retail building in the background. So we've got the stage and then kind of small amphitheater with some seating around. This is the building with the restrooms and the bars in it. Just to look from the other side. That's the building with the food truck park. And then the retail building. And then, this is across the street, this is the proposed hotel building. And then here are the renderings of that. So I know that was a lot of information. I have to take any questions and then go back and explain things as needed.
Commissioner Nogger.
Well, this looks like a great project. I can't wait for it to be done. Question for you, so the Doghouse Social Club is going in there, are they going to shut the one down on K then?
Correct, yeah. That location is just going to move over to this new site, and they're working on finding someone to backfill.
Vice Chairperson Nunnery.
What is the logic behind preventing the truck, food trucks from operating when the banquet center is operating? I mean, it seems like there's two different functions.
Yeah.
The banquet center would probably be limited to who's coming and going for a specific event, whereas the food trucks won't be.
Yeah, so the logic behind that has to do with the parking. Additionally, that's what the applicant has told us, is that they're planning on operating on different schedules. I would say most of it has to do with the parking needs. A 300-person banquet center and, you know, a food truck park like that would draw in a lot of people as well, so adding that to the parking totals of what's needed, they would have to change their plan quite a bit to provide more parking. So that's just based off what the applicant told us throughout this process, and then just trying to make the parking work with the parking study.
Would additional parking, bringing it up to what they're supposed to have to start with, eliminate that split between food trucks and the banquet center?
I believe it would, yeah.
Yeah.
The conditional use for the alcohol, does that include the entire site? The conditional use permit for the alcohol, does that include the entire site, including the hotel and the outlots?
So it covers the hotel, Dogwood Social House, the famous Toastery, the other restaurant, the food truck park, and the concession area of the sports facility. I don't believe that was intended to cover the outlots, so if a restaurant were to come in that would serve alcohol, they would need a conditional use permit when they come in with their site plans.
Oh, if there was an issue with any one of the facilities serving alcohol, the rest of them would lose their conditional use permit for alcohol then too.
I don't think that is necessarily the case. I see what you're saying with it all being under one, but they will all have their own liquor licenses, so if there is an issue, the city can revoke their liquor license instead of their conditional use permit, which would then affect all the other users covered by that. So we still have some recourse if there is an issue with alcohol sales.
Thank you.
Commissioner Seymour.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't believe I've seen a cross access from PD over there. You know, save the police a lot of running, just run back and forth, you know? Instead of going out and getting on, you know, Bryan Road or...
So it is kind of hard to see. It's right at the bottom of the page. So this is the existing drive coming off of Bryan Road that goes straight to the Justice Center. That road is connected here, so it will be connected. It's just kind of hard to see on here.
Yeah, I was looking for that. I didn't see it. That's why I wanted to bring that up.
Yep.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yes.
Madam Chair, has the city, if this is approved, has the city decided what they would look to do with the recycle that's currently there now?
Yeah, as from what I know, the city's looking to go to a single stream where trash and recycling are either handled by the city or an outside company, but the idea is to phase that out. So by the time this would be developed, they would be getting rid of the dumpsters and recycling that's there, so that would open up for them to put in that additional area of parking that's shown.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Let's go on to the next item on the agenda, because we're not, we're running out of time here.
Yep, we'll hurry up. All right, that takes us to new business, item 1A. This is a site plan for a renewable energy project located behind MasterCard. They're proposing a solar energy farm that will serve MasterCard. As part of the project, they're preserving a large portion of the existing trees, excuse me, between the existing subdivision adjacent to the site and the proposed solar panels. The batteries will be located at the southern end of the site, and then from there, the electric lines will run underground and tie into the MasterCard facility. Staff is recommending approval of the site plan with some of the following conditions. The proposed chain leak fence is not permitted in the high-tech zoning district, so they will need to get a variance approved for that, but we didn't think that would hold up this portion of the project, so that's just something they'll need to get done before construction plan approval. Provide cut sheets for the solar panels, the batteries, the inverters, pretty much all the equipment that they're using just to provide the city with some of the specifications, and to provide a detail of the cage structure shown in the renderings. And I can show that in here in just a second. Here's the tree removal plan. They're preserving, I believe up here, it's about 180 feet of trees, and then preserving, you know, as many trees as they can adjacent to these homes, and then down here at the end, it tapers down to about 30 feet, so there's still a substantial amount of buffer tall existing trees that are going to be remaining. Here is the site plan. Those black lines are all the solar panels. They'll access from Wing Haven Boulevard, which is right out here, and then they're proposing an asphalt access road through there, and then down the site. The batteries are located down here, so pretty far away from all the homes. And then, like I said, from there, it'll route the electric underground over to MasterCard. So here are the renderings. You can kind of see a little bit of a cage structure here. We don't have any details on that, so that's what we're asking for some information on. Any questions on this?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Seymour.
Do we have an actual count on how many trees are going to be taken away, how many are remaining before and after?
We do somewhere, let me see. Can't quite see that. It looks like 32 acres of trees are being saved on this site. I don't know if Spencer, if you can pull that up real quick and look, but yeah, they're saving what they can.
Really? That's your answer?
With the grade, the grading they need to do, they're saving the amount of trees that they reasonably can, along with the trees along the existing residential.
Somebody may ask, so I'm suggesting we get an exact amount?
Yeah, we have that. I just don't have it in front of me.
Somebody that likes trees.
30.4 acres of trees existing. They're clearing 18.39, saving 12.01, and so that's a 39.51% savings rate.
So about 40% of the trees. Thank you, Spencer.
All right, let's go on to the next item.
Yeah, to the east over there, that's Kingsgate, that subdivision in Wing Haven there. What's the distance between the Kingsgate subdivision and where the farm's going to start?
I believe it's just right on the other side of the edge of the trees, so like I said, up here, they've got about 180 feet of trees, so I'd say about 180 feet, and then I think in the middle, it's about 80 feet, and down here it tapers down to about 30, so.
So they're going to leave those trees out on the back?
They're going to leave the trees, and then the arrays will start right on the edge of the trees. You're welcome.
All right, let's go on to the next item on the agenda.
All right. Next is new business, items 2A through 2D. This is a request for a site plan, two conditional use permits for a mixed-use building at 211 Rushway in Caledonia. The applicant is proposing a six-story building with retail and parking on the first floor, apartments for rent on floors 2 through 5, and then for-sale condos on the top floor. The retail spaces on the first floor are for a virtual shooting simulator with a bar and restaurant, kind of like a Topgolf or a golf simulator, and then a restaurant called Buttermilk Southern Kitchen. The conditional use permits are for the sale and service of alcohol by the drink in both of those spaces, and then for the residential uses in the C2 zoning district. 232 parking spaces are provided with this plan. The code requires 276. However, this site, the surrounding properties, as well as the old movie theater site, they're all covered by a shared parking agreement, so that will cover that small gap. This plan was originally here in August 2004. They made some changes to their plan, kind of shown here. They've added a floor. The number of apartments stays the same, but they have added the 13 two-bedroom condo units on the top floor. They have added some parking spaces and then reduced the amount of retail space to provide parking dedicated specifically for the condos. So part of that first floor will be parking, and then the rest of it will be the retail. Staff is recommending approval of the conditional use permits, both of those with our standard conditions. And then we are recommending approval of the site plan with some conditions. Provide the calculations for the number of loading spaces needed. Staff believes that additional loading space will be required. The six-floor condo units shall only be for sale and not rented. And then it appears cars looking left from the east entrance to the site may have sightlines blocked by the dumpster enclosure. Ensure site distance is not an issue at this location, and provide a sightline easement if needed. So here's the site. You have the existing swim school, hotel was proposed down here, and then the gas station. And they've got parking over here and adding some on the gas station site, and then this area here of the building is where that parking dedicated to the condos will be, so. There's the elevations, and then the rendering of the building there, so. Any questions on that?
All right, let's see, let's go on on the agenda.
Okay. Items 3A and 3B, staff has requested these items to be tabled. We've not received any information from the applicant, have not been able to get all of them, so request those to be tabled. So that will take us to new business, item 4A. This is a reconsideration of a condition of approval for community signage plan that was approved for Harvest. Their sign locations that they're proposing, we originally required them to meet the standard requirements of the sign code, 10 feet from right-of-way and property lines, and 3 feet from the sidewalks. The way that those turn out to be laying out, they're not able to meet all those requirements, so we're requesting to revise condition number 6 to state, show the distance from the edge of all signs to the property lines, including residential lots as well as sidewalks, curvings, where it is applicable, a minimum distance of 10 feet is required from right-of-way lines. So that takes out the requirement from sidewalks, which gives them the flexibility they need, and that is what those signs look like.
Commissioner Howard.
If this is required by code, why wouldn't this go to the Board of Adjustment rather than to us?
Just because this process is laid out in the sign code to not need the variance, the community sign plan, that was, it's originally approved with a conditional use permit, which is how it's laid out in the sign code, so the conditional use permit allows them to make those alterations without needing the variance. So we're just continuing to follow that process and just amend the condition.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right.
Okay, and then that's it.
Okay. All right, well, we'll take a recess, and we'll start the regular meeting at about 5:00 after 7:00, give everybody a chance to get ready for the regular meeting.
So if anybody wants to speak at a public hearing or citizens' comments, you do need to fill out a sheet that's sitting in the back, back there, so you need to have that before their chairman hits the gavel. So if you want to speak either to public hearing, all the public hearings that we have, or if it doesn't have a public hearing, you need to fill out a card and give it to the chairman before she hits the gavel before we start.
We will now begin the January 2nd, 2025 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. Tracy, can you do the roll call?
Chairperson Carolyn Thomas.
Present.
Vice Chairperson Nunnery.
Present.
Mayor Hennessy.
Present.
Councilwoman Cook.
She's excused.
Commissioner Howard.
Present.
Commissioner Seymour.
Present.
Commissioner Nogger.
Present.
Commissioner Boust.
Present.
Commissioner Heath.
Present.
Commissioner Lambers.
Present.
Commissioner Link.
Present.
Commissioner Wexler.
Present.
Commissioner Agameyer.
Present.
Mayor, will you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Members of the commission, you have in front of you the agenda for this evening's Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Motion to approve, Nunnery. Second, Howard.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as presented. All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as presented. Members of the commission, cast your votes.
Voting is closed.
All right, the agenda for this evening's meeting has been approved. At this point during the meeting, we open it up to citizens' comments. If you've completed a comment card for an agenda item that has a public hearing or a public comment, we will hold your opportunity to speak until that time. At this time, we will open it up to citizens' comments for items that are on the agenda, and we have two people that have completed cards for citizens' comments and for items that are not a public hearing or public comment on the agenda. And the first one is Mr. Arnie Deanoff.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chairwoman, members of the commission. Just wanted to start out by saying Happy New Year to everybody. Hopefully, there'll be a great 2025 in terms of planning and zoning issues. My name is Arnie C. A.C. Deanoff, city public advocate and running for Ward 1 City Council. First of all, the issue on the agenda on page 1 between the agenda approval, the agenda and citizen comments, I don't see any monthly meeting approval. And for some reason, this commission has decided to not comply with Chapter 89 of the revised State Statutes of Missouri and not approve official meeting minutes, which I think is disingenuous to our city population. Moving on to new business, under item 24-012184, request for consideration and motion of action for a site plan on Hammock Road, which is in essence a renewable energy project, a solar project for Wing Haven Mastercard. Wing Haven Mastercard does have an outstanding environmental quality and environmental green projects and programs that they have initiated. My concern is, is on the overall property, is the amount of tree removal. I believe that there was a calculation that was quickly done that stated that there will be 40% of the trees removed. I want to make sure that that's in compliance with our tree ordinance under the city codified code. As we all know, we want to try to save a number of our trees if we can all, at all possible, do that. But overall, it looks like the project is going to be a good project, trying to consume electricity and save the power bill for the Mastercard facility located in Wing Haven. I believe, Madam Chairwoman, I just wanted to inquire to you, 300 Sondren Street, has that been tabled, those two items? Which is the bar and grill?
Requesting to have it tabled, items 3A and B.
Yeah, okay. And I believe everything else has got a public hearing that will be on the agenda, and it'll be testifying at the appropriate times. Thank you, Madam Chairwoman.
All right. And the other person that has completed a comment card, Matt Borgmeyer.
Good evening to everyone. My name is Matt Borgmeyer, 11849 Kingsgate, which came up earlier in the discussions. I'm here representing the Kingsgate homeowners, because I'm a board member there, and obviously want to speak on the Hammock Road renewal energy project. We are asking for a delay in this site plan approval. We have just become engaged with this project. We didn't even, we weren't aware of this project until 12 days ago. We were notified by our alderman that this was on the agenda for tonight, which we have not been consulted by either the city, the developer, the landowner, or Mastercard. When we learned of this project 12 days ago, we contacted Mastercard immediately, requesting a meeting. Mastercard pointed us to the developer, a company called BioStar. BioStar complied. We had a meeting with them last Friday with our board members, three of us, and we basically just learned what this thing is. We had no idea up until that idea, until then. We have 24 homeowners in our subdivisions whose property will be adjacent to this solar farm. If you're familiar with the area, we sit up on a hill, kind of, above this area, and looking out our back windows, our back doors, and our patios, we will be looking directly over, we were told, approximately 25 acres of solar panels. Obviously, that's not really what we want. We have a very nice buffer now between Mastercard and our homes. It's a very nice area, and we think this property, this project is going to destroy our property values, quite honestly. I don't think anybody sitting here would want to look out every day and look at a solar farm in their backyard, and that's a substance what the city is asking us to do. Quite honestly, we weren't asked, "Where are you here tonight?", because we found out about this through the back door. So all we're asking for tonight, we have requested another meeting with BioStar to learn more about this project. They have agreed to do that. We do not have a meeting date set, but we are asking you to delay this item until we can get further engaged in this project and hopefully make it palatable to us. That's really my only comments tonight. Just a couple of the concerns that we have specifically are the sightlines from our homes into this area. It's just going to be acres and acres and acres of solar panels, is what it's going to be. The tree clearing document that was listed here, I would like to see the right numbers too, because this document here that was brought up here a while ago, it says on here that 20% of the trees will be retained, which to me means 80% will be removed. We do have some buffer between our homes and the creek, and then the solar farm will start, but quite honestly, if you go out there right now, if you stand in my backyard, I'm going to be looking at a solar farm. I bought my property five years ago because I thought this was a beautiful area, and I bought it primarily because of the outdoor space. So the meeting we requested with BioStar would be to bring all our people in our community...
Mr. Borgmeyer, I'm sorry, you have a three-minute time limit on your speaking, so.
All right.
But we made comments, or notes of your comments, and when the agenda item is presented, we can ask the developer at that time.
Okay, just one more item, just real quick. We have some health concerns about those two. We have documents that show that solar farms should not be presented anywhere near 500 meters.
Yeah, I understand we've got to keep it to the time limit. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, with that, we will close citizens' comments. And the first item, under old business, we will need a motion to remove it from the table. This is for the O'Fallon Sports Complex. It's a unified public hearing and comment for various items regarding this project. One is a recommendation to the city council regarding the rezoning. The, we have a, a request for consideration and motion for action on a preliminary plat for the O'Fallon Sports Complex. We have a request for consideration and motion for a recommendation to the city council regarding a conditional use permit for a banquet hall, also a conditional use permit for an indoor recreation facility, a conditional use permit for a food truck park, and a conditional use permit for the sale and service of alcoholic beverages by the drink, and also for the request for consideration and motion for action on the site plan for the O'Fallon Sports Complex. Do we have a motion to remove these items from the table?
No, Ms. Seymour.
Nunnery, for all items, including unified public hearing and comment on all related items.
Second, Link.
All right, we have a motion and a second to remove these eight items from the table. Members of the commission, cast your votes.
Voting is closed.
All right, this item is now open for discussion. Do we have someone here to present this item?
Good evening.
Yeah, I just want to remind you that before you start your presentation, you have 10 minutes as a presenter.
Okay.
For your time limit, okay?
Thank you. My name's Josh Barkus. I'm with Stockton Associates. We're the civil engineer for this project. With us tonight is the owner developer, Andy Patel, and we also have Sean White, Senior Traffic Engineer Associate with CBP. We read through all of the conditions as it relates to the conditional use permits, and we don't have any comment on those items, so we won't discuss those as part of this presentation. Relative to the rezoning, just reading out of the present, or the staff report that was provided, it's justified due to the proposed use of the site. The subject property is partially adjacent to other commercial uses, which is consistent with the area. Where adjacent to residential uses, a 30-foot buffer is required and provided. All necessary services are provided to the site. The zoning of the parcels to the C2 sports overlay is required by the city code due to the proposed land uses, and the proposed zoning is consistent with the surrounding area and not having a negative impact on the surrounding land uses. Approval of the rezoning would be consistent with the city's adopted redevelopment policies and comprehensive plan, and the subject property is designated as suitable for retail uses on the future land use map in the city's comprehensive plan. And then this is a snippet out of the report that was prepared by the city. This is the hotel site, and this is the sports complex site that's across the street, noting that the intended uses for this area are hotel, neighborhood, retail, both of which are included, and then discuss that they'll continue to work relative to any medical office uses that could be utilized in these areas. The hotel site is at the northeast corner of Winged Foot Drive Veterans Memorial Parkway. Generally, there's a high point at the southwest corner, and it drains northwesterly through the site. There's a small portion of the site that drains easterly back to the apartment complex and the swale that's along Winged Foot Drive. It's about 3.34 acres. And then this is a colored site plan of the site. For the site coverage, it's approximately 40.5% green space. We're proposing a drive connection here to Veterans Memorial Drive, aligning with the drop-off area at the Portak Share for the hotel. A secondary access has been shown off Winged Foot Drive, and as noted in the report, we'll continue to work with city staff on how to utilize that entrance and the signal that's existing there at Winged Foot Drive and Veterans Memorial Parkway. We're proposing a sidewalk that comes out through the front door and down to the intersection. There will need to be some intersection modifications. Right now, there's no pedestrian crossings or push buttons at that location, so there'd have to be some upgrades to that signized intersection to allow that. And then part of the traffic study noted that there should be a right-turn lane, so that's not yet represented on this plan, but as staff had mentioned earlier, we're continuing to work through the comments that we've received from the city, the traffic study, and moving forward with drawing those up to have further discussions. The only item that I would mention relative to the conditions is regarding the retaining wall. In looking at the city's code, the 2 to 1 distance between the retaining walls is only required if you don't have a geotechnical engineer have input on the stability of that retaining wall. So we would plan to move forward as it is and provide global stability studies from geotechnical engineer and a retaining wall engineer whenever we get to the construction documents. That's outlined in the city's code as a, as another method of the distance between retaining walls, not necessarily adhering to a 2 to 1 setback between walls. A copy of the landscape plan here, there's 50 canopy trees proposed, 13 under-story trees, 28 evergreen trees, a total of 201.5 total caliper inches, and that's relative to the amount of the calipers that are being taken down on the site to meet the city's code and their tree ordinance. And then here's some views of the hotel. This is looking to the southeast, so this is, I guess this is where you're standing on the high side of the site, looking back towards it. This is the north end that faces towards kind of where the billboard area is today that's being removed. This is looking at the front entry of the building from Veterans Memorial Parkway. This is looking north from Winged Foot Drive, and then just another couple of views of the front entry area. The building is made up of various colored tile panels, some wood cladding that's in some areas, and then there's some thin natural stone that's proposed along various portions along the bottom of the building. This is the sports center site, so now we're southeast of the intersection, or southwest side of the intersection of Thornbury and Veterans Memorial Parkway. Generally, the site drains from the north to the southeast. The Justice Center is located here, and the Justice Center Drive is here. Here's the existing gas station in car wash and the intersection at Bryan Road. As was mentioned by staff, there's three proposed buildings as part of this initial plan. There's the sports complex, which includes the Dogwood Social, the Toast, I guess the Toastery, which is a breakfast restaurant, and inside there is the banquet facility. There's a retail building that's along the eastern side of the site, and then the food truck and Bourbon Garden area that has the building on the west side, and then the stage area that's on the southeast. I believe one of the comments from the staff in their conditions was relative to the setback from the stage structure, and we'll continue to work on that to ensure that we're meeting the code for that setback requirement. There are four outlots then for future development along the frontage of this, Veterans Memorial Parkway, so there'll be one access off Thornbury Crossing, one out to the north, basically the central of the site along Veterans Memorial Parkway, and then continuing to connect to the access that exists at the Justice Center out to Bryan Road. There's also an access that comes through via a cross-access easement that's existing between the gas station and the car wash coming into the backside of the retail building. I think there was a note about some covenants and restrictions, and a draft of that has been submitted, but we'll have to continue to work with city as it relates to those that encompass the Justice Center today. And then the residential development is existing to the west, and there's a 30-foot buffer that's being proposed. The site-proof fence has been shown to be closer to the parking lot than the property line, and that's because there's a lot of existing large trees along that property line. So to meet the city's requirement, we want to leave those trees in place and then put the site-proof fence closer to the parking lot. We're showing the sidewalk access is through the site, and I think there's a few conditions in the staff report that mentions to provide additional sidewalk along these outlots connecting to the retail building, getting around the corner of the banquet center. And then while it doesn't show very well, there's an existing sidewalk here that we're connecting to where the trail that we're extending here comes and ties into, and then there's also another 10-foot wide trail proposed along Veterans Memorial Parkway. The Lot 1, which is the sports complex, is about 14% green. The remainder of it is building and pavement area. The retail building is about 42% green, the remainder is the parking in the building, and then the Bourbon Garden and the food truck court is about 28% green space with a lot of open area between the stage, the food truck area, and the building. Overall, there's 128 canopy trees proposed, 16 under-story trees, 26 evergreens, and then there's a mix of shrubs, ornamentals, grasses, and annuals throughout the site. This site is fairly undeveloped, or has been graded, it looks like, at some point in time. There aren't a lot of trees except along the perimeter of the site next to the residential, which we plan to save as many as we can. And then, as staff had shown before, here's some views of the project exterior of the sports center building. There's a mix of different materials that includes resin panels, architectural metal panels, some stone veneer in areas along the bottom of the facade. There's some stucco and storefront in these areas here that have canopies over top of them, as you see lining in the front of the building. There's a second story here, outdoor patio area that has a pergola over the top of it. And here's just a list of materials that we were explaining before showing up on the site plan. This view is the south side, so if you were standing in the Justice Center parking lot, the backside of the building, and then out from the outlet facing the front of the building with your back to Veterans Memorial Parkway. This is the view if you were coming in the drive off Thornbury Crossing, so you're coming in from the west, heading east into the site, and then just some close-up views of the other sides of the building. This is the Bourbon Garden structure. It's made of, or proposed to be made of, heavy timber wood. There's some metal paneling that's along the building as well, and just some 3D perspectives of how that building would look with the stage in the background. So that's Bryan Road out there in the far end. So, that's Bryan Road out there in the far end, and then the Justice Center Drive and the new, new access connection proposed into the site. And then here's just some elevations of the retail building. It's a mixture of, I believe it's Ephesus metal panels and some stone along the bottom of the building. And then, as staff had mentioned, there's a traffic impact study, and subsequently there was a memo provided by the city's review of that traffic study.
We'll give you two more minutes.
Okay. We'll just continue to work with staff. There was a response to the city memo that I think that came out just the other day, and so we'll continue to work with city staff on all of those items. Thank you.
Mayor?
Josh, on, on the fence that butts the residential, you said you put the fence closer to the parking lot?
That's correct.
And the trees are on your property?
That is correct.
So, when you do the lawn mowing and stuff, you're going to be taking care of the backside of the?
That's correct. So, one of the original comments of the review was to leave it short about 10 or 15 feet from Thornbury to make sure that there was access to that side of it, and so we've-
As well make sure that you're not just cutting in front of the fence and leaving everything else behind the fence, just letting it grow. I just want to make sure you're taking care of, on the backside of the fence also.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Noggin.
Hi, good afternoon. Great project. The, where the stage area is, close to Bryan Road there?
Yes, sir.
How close is that stage going to be to the road?
I think that the setback is 25 feet from right away, and so it's a corner lot, so it's 25 feet on both. And let me get to the right slide here. It's not the stage, I believe, when I review it. There's this angled piece right here. I, I think it's those, those overarching pieces that say barrel and bites, and I think we might just have to rotate those to make sure that we keep those out of the setback, but the stage portion itself would be outside the setback that it's adjacent to.
Commissioner Seymour?
Could you, could you point out the closest residential or even apartments or anyone that's going to be disturbed by whatever's going on in the Bourbon Garden?
Yeah, so, we don't have the houses surveyed in on this property, but we can certainly work to give you that answer. Right now, there's the 30-foot buffer yard along both of these sides. There's some green space then, and then this, I believe, is a drive that goes behind all those houses, and I think that they might have garages tucked under on that side, if I'm remembering correctly. Like, it's almost like a back alley feeding those garages on that, that side. So, if I had to guess, you know, from the parking lot, it's 30, probably another 30 feet, about 60-plus feet to the homes themselves.
We know voices carry.
Yeah, the Bourbon Garden isn't adjacent to the sports complex.
We've had noise issues in the past.
Okay.
And that was sometimes even from inside the building. And anytime that you're going to be near a residential structure, whether it's an apartment or a home, or even those people trying to sleep in the hotel rooms across the street, you don't want to disturb people. And I guarantee you, as close as you are to PD, they're going to be monitoring those decibels, so.
Understood. I take that into consideration.
Yes, Commissioner.
I like the way this looks. My concern is the roadway to the food truck. Is there going to be any type of traffic control measures as people be exiting the car wash or down QuickTrip headed towards that area? And I'd imagine, it looks like it's a pretty straight road, right, to the food truck area? In light of our environment we're in today, I'd like to see some type of traffic control.
Some type of calming device there as they would cross through? So, you're talking about this road that comes through the back and straight down into here?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We can certainly look at what those measures could be.
Right, Commissioner Seymour?
One other question. I was looking at the traffic study that was prepared. This whole corridor is being developed right now, and that's, that's going to add a bunch of traffic to both Bryan Road and Veterans Memorial. I know there was some question in, in the traffic study on maybe some things we could propose, or maybe, maybe it's the city's job, I'm not sure. But can you talk about the traffic study for a minute?
I'm going to let Sean White here, she's with CBB, part of the traffic consultant team, for any specific questions on that.
Good evening, Sean White with CBB. Correct, we have, we have prepared a study, and we are recommending quite a few improvements in order to, you know, accommodate the existing traffic volumes and mitigate their impact. So, some of those include right and left turn lanes on Veterans Memorial Parkway at their main entrance that they're proposing. And then, we also looked at the need for a potential right turn lane up at the hotel driveway access in order to facilitate improved operations at the intersections of Veterans Memorial and Bryan Road. The traffic study recommends providing dual eastbound left turn lanes, so there would be two eastbound left turn lanes to facilitate that approach operating better. And then, the study also recommends a new traffic signal at the intersection of Bryan Road and the Justice Center Drive with, with the commercial outlets on the other side. And so, when you talk about everything going on, there's a lot going on in this area. And so, the study actually took into account all of those approved developments, being the Thornbury Crossing Apartments, the build out of Columbia Meadows, all of the outlots along Bryan Road. There are like the Dobbs, the McDonald's, and all those things that are, that are opening as we speak. And so, all of that is, is in the traffic study as a base scenario before we added the impact of all of this. So, there are some pretty substantial improvements recommended in order to facilitate acceptable operations.
And that proposal with the intersection changes, is that going to fall on the city of O'Fallon, the state, or both? How much is the developer going to actually be responsible for?
I mean, I think those are still being worked out with the city, with staff. I would presume a lot of that burden would fall on the developer, but I, we just, we just say what's needed. We don't say who's supposed to pay for it or how it gets done, so.
Mayor?
Well, I, I think to answer your question, yes, it's going to be the developer, it's going to be the city, it's going to be CMAC, it's going to be County Road Board, it's going to be basically everybody putting dollars in for improvements. Wade, is that correct?
Yeah, correct. As they said, we're still going to be working through some of that. This is a pretty large traffic study. It's unique development by all means, but we're also planning on submitting a CMAC application for even more improvements at VMP and Bryan Road. So, besides what they've determined as part of their traffic study, as you mentioned, there is a lot of traffic out there, and we'll be proposing and looking to construct additional improvements as well.
Of course, this isn't going to all happen overnight, right? So, I'll make sure I avoid that intersection as much as possible. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Let's see. Right now, if there's no other questions, we'll open it up to the public comment. And we have a couple people who have completed comment cards. Mr. Deanoff?
Thank you very much, Madam Chairwoman, members of the commission. My name is Arne C. A.C. Deanoff, and first of all, as you all know, Bryan Road and VMP I-70, this is our second busiest traffic corridor. It's our west-side chopping district, and it's growing at ever, a lot of different leaps and bounds every year because of the residential and commercial development. Now, the hotel, you know, it's my opinion, but the hotel looks like more like a hospital with those color schemes, rather than an inviting place to stay like a hotel. It looks like an institutional hospital, in my opinion. When it comes to the amphitheater, there needs to be major safety, especially, I think somebody brought up about today's climate, especially what happened in Las Vegas over New Year's Eve and in New Orleans. We need to really make sure that the safety of pedestrians and our citizens is the number one priority. That stage being 25 feet without any barriers from Bryan Road is just ludicrous. It's really the wrong place to put that stage and put people in harm's way with somebody who has some alternative motives or someone who wants to do some major damage and hate to our community. And so, I would ask the developer to rethink where the amphitheater goes for the most optimal protection of public safety. Noise issue, our city code is pretty defined on noise. We had it down on Missouri Highway K, down on the southern end with a bar issue about 10 years ago, and that was taken care of. Several of our patrol police cars upon a community complaint. There's a decibel meter that's provided in a number of the patrol cars throughout the 10 sectors of our city. The parking is of major concern. The plan, and from the traffic consultant says, over 1,000, I believe it's 1,057 parking spaces, but yet they want a variance to 756 parking spaces, and I have an issue with that, especially with using 97 parking spaces from our Justice Center. And when we have court, that lot can really fill up pretty fast. There are other special functions at the Justice Center. Traffic, I'm asking for deceleration and acceleration lanes that it only be allowed right in and right out. No left turn be allowed. This is our biggest, most traffic corridor with adding traffic almost every day in this corridor, and to have a left turn out of this would just be ludicrous and provide to public safety concerns. The trees, I'm not sure if they have enough trees, but the bottom line of this property is, this should be done on the backs of the developer, which is Dogwood Social. There should be no use of revised seat statutes, Chapter 100, Chapter 353, Chapter 357, giving tax breaks for corporation. There should be no tax abatements used in this issue.
Mr. Deanoff?
And no sales tax revenue bonds.
Mr. Deanoff. Also, we have Walter Lobster completed a comment card.
Yes. Good evening, council members. My name is Walter Lobster, and I am a resident of the Thornbury homeowners. And from what I've heard this evening, I have a number of concerns specifically regarding drainage, as, as shown earlier. I think there are a number of residents, such as myself, that haven't seen complete details of this plan, because there are a number of issues with regards to the drainage. And as I, I hear this evening, there's still a lot of planning regarding the development and, and with respect to the drainage. So, I think that's one issue. Several years ago, there was heavy rainfall, and myself, as well as several other members on that particular end, and I don't have a pointer or anything to, to show this, but according to the way he, the land slopes, we would be affected. And several years ago, there was a heavy rainfall, and my basement flooded. Insurance didn't really cover that because it was more of a flood than a water backup or drainage or breakage to my, my plumbing. So, that was a serious issue for me, and it cost about $17,000, $18,000 to repair my basement. So, that's one of the concerns. The other concern I have is regarding the traffic flow there, coming off of Bran Road onto Thornbury Crossing. And to me, I, I see a lot of issues with, with regards to that. I'm also hearing that there's still some planning relative to mitigation of traffic and congestion coming in and out of the subdivision. So, I just have a lot of concerns with that, and I like to make those concerns known. And again, I, I just think the details as presented tonight are still somewhat new, and a lot of this information hasn't been shared thoroughly with the homeowners in Thornbury Homeowners Association, so, thank you.
Thank you. Katie Vanderplug?
Plou.
I'm not sure if I pronounced your last name.
My name is Katie Vanderplug, and I am the president of the homeowners association, the adjacent residential to this property. And I do want to start off by saying that I know I'm not going to start with what people usually start off with is, this is the first I've heard and I had no idea. We've been very, very lucky that the developer and the city has been very forthcoming with information for our community. We've met with the developer, we've had the opportunity to look at plans, we invited our community, sorry, to come to the meeting for questions. They were really proactive with their communication with us. They have clearly thought out the plan. This is not something that they've done, this isn't the first time they've done it. It does feel like that they are coming into it understanding some of the challenges and that are willing to work with us, to work through some of those. I will say with, as far as like the drainage, we did, as a community, have issues with drainage previously because we shared detention basins with a very undeveloped part of land, which was the Wentz Way. This is probably my third or fourth development in this area that we've worked through together. The mayor knows me well. And so, that was, we actually now no longer hold any of that, that maintenance responsibility, and that has all been taken by the different groups that have built there. So, that is already something that will help our community, just, I wanted to speak to that for our resident, too. The developer's been great in answering our questions and making changes based on some of the concerns that we did bring to them about traffic, especially with sharing an entrance to our community in this development. So, we do look forward to more communication as the traffic study continues and as it impacts Thornbury directly. We are very pleased with their plan for buffering between our community and this development. So, like I said, I know it's not usually someone who gets up and says, you know, I'm against this. We are, are very positive in our thoughts about this being a neighbor to our community. We know something's going to be built in this area. This feels like something that could be great for the community and for our, our, our neighborhood. I just look forward to continuing to be in those communications, and then as those four lots are proposed, developed, I look forward to being in those communications as well and partnering with the city and any developers that come in, and I just appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. Thank you.
All right, that is all the comment cards that were completed for this, so we'll ask the presenter to come forward again and address some of the concerns expressed by the residents, or?
Sure. I think that the ones I have written down, obviously noise will comply with all the city ordinance relative to the noise as this, you know, comes up and begins to operate. Clearly, if there's any violations, they'll be subject to whatever those, those codes are that the city has. As far as safety in the stage, there's quite a bit of relief between the, the stage area and Bryan Road. I think we have about 12 feet of slope coming up from Bryan Road before we get to our stage. Certainly, if there were any other requirements that would be relative to safety, we would take them into consideration. I don't think that it's something that's, someone just driving along the road can necessarily get up and hit with the way that it's currently graded out to be shown. As far as pedestrian safety, there'll be stop signs and striping and other things, and, you know, as the commissioner had mentioned about the road there, we'll look at traffic and calming devices for that particular piece as it comes into the Bourbon Garden. There was a concern about drainage. So, the area that, all of the parking and all of this site, it, it won't be sheet-flowing on to these neighbors' property. We have a series of inlets and piping system. All of this area drains through the Justice Center property via storm sewers that were put in place whenever that was developed, and it has stubbed out and taken into consideration an amount of development along this entire parcel. So, a vast majority of the sports complex actually gets piped to the back and comes through these existing pipes that continue through the Justice Center site. And then, a good portion of this eastern part of the site, again, there's, right now there's culverts that come underneath the Justice Center Drive. I think there's dual elliptical pipe culverts there that we plan to connect to. So, so all of the storm water that's going to be running down onto the site is going to be collected into inlets will be providing- to be collected into inlets, will be providing water quality as is required by the city ordinances, and then it'll be tied via pipe system to continue downstream through the piped network that exists today. And those were the comments that I had written down relative to concerns. You know, I don't have anything to state relative to any incentive packages that might be discussed with the developers in the city or just the engineers on the plan at this time.
So when, do you expect that this would get started? And?
I've been told as soon as we can. So I know that we have some work to do. We're actually working on drawing up these traffic improvements that have been outlined so we can put a cost together and further discussions that we need to have with the city. We're looking into, Andy actually called me today, and we're trying to put a schedule together of when we can actually get our plans developed through this process and get them into the city for review. I would like to say that, you know, early summer would be the goal, I think, for everybody once the rain stop that we usually get in the late spring that has us the ability to move some dirt.
So, so at this point, the project would be, get started at that time, but?
Right.
But, I mean, so how does that work with any of the traffic, the improvements to the traffic area, roadway around there in terms of?
Well, I think that those plans would be in conjunction with those or even a separate set of drawings that goes with. I think the city will ultimately stipulate which, which improvements must be in place before you can have an occupancy permit. I don't think in my mind that they're going to let the sports complex open without any improvements being in place on day one. I don't know the construction schedule right now as far as the duration from when they start moving dirt to when it'd be actually ready to occupy any of the buildings, but be happy to continue to dig into that with the developers', construction management team, and see where that ends up.
I was just curious if, and I don't know if anybody on the city staff could say, if that project is done at a certain time, and then it's like, you know, a year or two later before the traffic improvements are done, or?
If you look at the site plan, one of the conditions, if I'm not mistaken, says they have to meet all the traffic study improvements that has been agreed upon.
But, I mean, I guess I'm a little, but if some, but?
They're not going to be able to open the center until all the traffic, whatever is agreed to with the city and the developer and everybody else, they will not be able to open until they meet the traffic study requirements.
Including all the agencies that you were referencing earlier? Okay.
Because that's what I believe is on the site plan, David?
Yeah, that's one of the conditions on the site plan that kind of outlines that. It's first the traffic study, and then there's a memo that I had put together right before, well, it would have been right after Christmas last week, that kind of followed up on some of the questions we had of the traffic study. So we wanted to make sure that the site, the construction plans, all that is compliant with those comments and the recommendations in the traffic study, and that's the condition.
And so one of the items that we keep saying is further discussion with the city is that the memo came out last week from the city that outlined some number of items that were outside of what the traffic study had prescribed. And we just got a response to that memo into the city. I believe it was on Tuesday. So that's why there's further discussions is that the information is still being gone back and forth relative to all the items that have been come to light in the past couple weeks.
Okay. Can we share Seymour?
Thank you. I think what Madam Chair was in reference to, and correct me if I'm wrong, is once you receive your construction permit, to get started, what is your ETA on that?
No, understood. And I don't know that I have that answer for you right now. That's something that we'll have to work. We're just the design engineer. We'll have to work with some of the construction folks to understand how long it would take to build and be done with.
Right. I think the word is, and I think somebody should have a ballpark. I would think a year and a half or so, once you get permits going.
All right. This is Mr. Patel.
And I understand weather permitting and all that stuff, too.
So when I talked to the few GC, they said, once we start the construction, it's about anywhere from 14 to 18 months.
Very good.
Ground now.
So that's all?
Once we get a permit, so whenever we get a permit, from time from that.
That way we all know. Thank you very much. Put a heads up.
Mr. Bost.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Just looking at the plan for the four lots at the front that are being undeveloped right now, am I reading that correctly? Where you're going to have a main entrance and to enter those lots, you're proposing from inside?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, there wouldn't be any more accesses along Veterans Memorial Parkway along the front edge.
So as those get developed, they're only going to be entered through the inside of the park?
That's correct. And so there'll be, as mentioned in the covenants, there'll be some items related to utilities and cross-access that would allow free access between all these lots and the interior roads to get to their sites.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Can we share Seymour?
Thank you. I just have an observation. I'm just curious. If you go down 4061 to 70, you look through Darden Prairie, Lake St. Louis, all these apartments, all these buildings, why do they all look alike? Is it the same developer building them all?
The apartments?
I'm talking, just about all of these structures, they all look alike. They got the same color coating, everything on the exterior. It looks like it's just a continuation. It's just weird looking to me.
Well, I can, with the hotel and stuff, that is their color scheme. So it's going to be, that's their color scheme that says you're building this type of hotel, this color scheme that you're going to have. I mean, it's same, you look at any of the hotels, you go from one city to the same city, and it's the same hotel, it's the same color scheme.
Well, you go, you go through Darden Prairie and all those apartments they built, senior living, Lake St. Louis, they all look alike. I'm just curious. If you don't know, that's fine.
I'm not certain about those projects now, sir.
Commissioner Howard, did you have a comment?
Are we going to vote on each one of these?
Separate.
Individually?
Yes, yes.
Okay, I'll wait till that period comes up to discuss particular items on each.
Well, we're kind of discussing them all right now. Is there something in particular I might have?
Sure, I could take it now. That's fine. In regards to the site plan?
Yes, sir.
There are conditions in section 40330 that governs extended stay facilities.
Mm-hmm.
And one of the things that was listed on the plan was that they're talking about roll-ins. I presume those are roll-in beds?
No, sir. Those are notifying that those units have roll-in showers for ADA access.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so it's a double queen with a roll-in shower.
And there were, it was very confusing with all the printing and stuff that were on the floor plans, but how many of the units have kitchenettes in them?
Do you know that, Andy?
Yeah, it's about 60% will have a small two-top burner microwave. So it's 167 room. It's about 120 rooms will have a microwave and.
But that's the only, there's not going to be any stoves or ovens or cooktops or anything in any of them?
Two-burner cooktops, but no oven or anything, no. This is just warming the food. It's not really cooking the food right there.
The, according to the plans, the notes on the plan offer the parapet wall to be a minimum height of the tallest unit on the rooftop, but then the plan shows different elevations sections that are showing that mechanicals are taller than the parapet wall.
Yeah, and we'll review, not only that, that note may be conflicting on the civil drawings relative to the code. I think the code states that the planning commission may make that a requirement where the parapet be as tall if it's not screened, or if they're felt that it's not screened from view is the way that I read that particular item in the code itself.
On new construction, the parapet wall has to be as tall as the units.
If that's the case, then we'll discuss that with the architect to comply.
The detention for the hotel, I was kind of confused on where that's located. Are you pumping it across?
No, it's our understanding discussing with the city is that all the detention of these properties was accounted for in the original Thornbury Crossing developments that included the hotel site.
But where is the detention for the hotel?
I'm not certain where in the Thornbury Crossing development. The calculations were done for it to account for this site, but it drains north via culvert under Highway 70.
Oh, okay. It's a long ways off, but okay, yes.
That's correct. And there's actually a culvert on the west side of Veterans Memorial Parkway that picks up the road drainage and then takes it under and then, or under the highway.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
The food truck, looked like there were four parking spots for food trucks, but then there's a cross-access aisle that runs through one of them.
Yeah, there should only be three that makes room for that drive aisle. Our hope was to get four, and that might just be a discrepancy on, on the drawings. Our hope was to get four, but we wanted that crossing to come down the stairs, so there's only actually going to be three spaces there.
Okay. The?
I'm sorry, it should be about four because it go to, if you look at it, go on both sides.
Well, it shows there's four, but then they put a cross-access aisle right through a pedestrian walk, right through the middle one.
You know, right there, three and two here. Yes, this can go back, you know, right? So it's four, two on each side.
Okay, I apologize. We'll clarify that on the site plan there to?
I mean, it looks like you could fit four in, but you might need to juggle them around that cross axile. That would make a difference in the number of electric stations and water hookups and?
Correct.
And everything else you need, so that's why I'm concerned about it. How, what are the plans for the stage area? I mean, there's a movie screen, obviously sometimes they're going to show movies, but are we looking at bands and stuff being on the stage, or?
Yes, there will be local band playing pretty much every other night or every night or something going on on the stage.
Oh, okay, no, I'm sorry.
But most of every night with a local band.
Okay. The, and I noticed that you put it just about as far away from the residential as you can get it, near Bryan Road rather than on the other side of the development, and I'm sure that the residents will appreciate that, but.
Sound does carry, and it, you can hear it a long way sometime on quiet nights. I live way south on Highway K, and I can hear the train going through the city here, so it's, it's a long ways. The second floor of the barrel and bits handicap accessible?
I don't believe so.
The second floor will be not because ground floor and second floor is pretty much identical. So what we will have on a ground floor, we'll have a second floor, so.
Yeah, there's just a stair access up to that level.
And the only other thing I had was that the trash enclosure on Sheet A-102 needs a passive entrance?
Yes, sir. We'll get that fixed.
Thank you very much.
I have a question on the, you had said something in the beginning of your presentation about the retaining wall?
Yeah. So that's related to the hotel site. So I think the condition said, and let me get to the right plan here. The condition said on these walls that there must be 22 feet of separation between them. The city's code relative to terrorist and vertical retaining wall says they shall not be placed any closer to one another as recommended by a geotechnical engineer or by a ratio of minimum two feet to one foot vertical height separation. So what we're saying is we just want that, that condition to be amended to be that they should be per the city's code because a geotechnical engineer and global stability study could easily say that these walls, as they are shown, can be constructed and live that way. So there's an option, and the way that that condition reads is it says you must follow this, this piece of the one option.
Wade? Wade's over here.
How tall are those walls?
I would agree with that. After we heard it, we looked up the code, and yeah, it's essentially if you don't want to do any detailed design, you need to go two foot for every foot up, if you will, or have it designed by a geotechnical engineer, so.
Signed.
Yeah. So ultimately, when we come in for construction drawings, there'll be a global stability study analysis done by a geotechnical engineer, and they'll actually design the retaining walls and all the tieback systems to make sure that there is integrity. There's some factor of safety that they'll have that it doesn't undermine in slide or slope or that these walls would tilt over over time.
And that was on the site? Is that on the?
I believe it was on the, one of the site plan ones.
It's number four on the hotel site, site plan.
Stephanie, can you get that reworded when it gets to that point?
Okay.
And that section is 405.275 of the city's code.
And then I also have a question about the site plan with the information that Commissioner Howard pointed out, and I know you guys said that you'll get that worked out, but right now, what we have is a site plan that isn't really worked out. So how can we approve that? David, is that something that's, if, if we wanted to approve that site plan, how can we approve it when it's not really presented as, there's a conflict? Because they're saying there's, Commissioner Howard, you might want to explain it better than, but there's four food trucks on there, and one of the trucks is going through the cross access.
The?
Any condition about that? But yeah, that's, that sounds like it's just shifting a couple painted lines around. There's room there, it's just not striped off that way. It doesn't really change the site as much, maybe just pavement striping, I think, yeah.
And then the condition stays the same because it says that all food truck courts must follow all these rules for hookups and things that the city has in their code, so.
So it's not a major adjustment to the site plan? Okay. All right, members of the commission, does anyone else have any comments or questions regarding this item? Eight items on the agenda this evening? All right, if not, we'll start going through them, and we can vote on each one individually. So the first item is a request for consideration and motion for recommendation to the city council regarding the rezoning of the northwest quadrant of Veterans Memorial Parkway and Winged Foot Drive and the southwest quadrant of Veterans Memorial Parkway and Thornbury Crossing Drive and 1001 Bryan Road from C2 General Business District to C2 General Business District Sports Tourism Overlay District. O'Fallon Playfields Commons LLC is the property owner, and this is for the proposed use of a sports facility, hotel, restaurants, food truck park, banquet hall, and commercial recreational facility. Members of the commission, do we have a motion of recommendation to the city council regarding this item?
So moves. Seymour.
Second, Charlie Nogger.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for a recommendation of approval to the city council regarding the rezoning of this property. Members of the commission, cast your votes.
Voting is closed.
All right. So there is a recommendation by the Planning and Zoning Commission of approval to the city council regarding the rezoning of this property, and this will be at which city council meeting?
Next Thursday.
At next Thursday's city council meeting. The next item on this, item on the agenda is a request for consideration and motion for action on a preliminary plat for O'Fallon Sports Complex located at the northwest quadrant of Veterans Memorial Parkway and Winged Foot Drive and southwest quadrant of Veterans Memorial Parkway and Thornbury Crossing Drive and 1001 Bryan Road. O'Fallon Playfield Commons LLC is the property owner for a, the proposed use of seven lot sports and tourism development. Do we have a motion regarding this item?
Make a recommendation of approval based upon staff conditions, Howard.
Second, Seymour.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the preliminary plat for this project. Members of the commission, cast your votes.
Voting is closed.
All right, motion carries. The next item? The next item is a request for consideration and motion for recommendation to the city council regarding a conditional use permit for O'Fallon Sports Complex. O'Fallon Playfield Commons LLC is the property owner for the banquet hall. Do we have a motion regarding this item on the agenda?
Some move, same on.
Second, Wexler.
We have a motion and a second to, for a recommendation of approval to the city council regarding the conditional use permit for the banquet hall. Members of the commission, cast your votes.
Voting is closed.
All right, motion carries. The next item is a request for consideration and motion for recommendation to the city council regarding a conditional use permit for O'Fallon Sports Complex. O'Fallon Playfield Commons LLC is the property owner, and this is for the indoor recreation facility. Members of the commission, do we have a motion regarding this item on the agenda?
Motion to approve for staff recommendation, Tennessee.
Second, Howard.
All right, we have a motion and a second to make a recommendation of approval to the city council regarding a conditional use permit for O'Fallon Sports Complex for the indoor recreation facility. Members of the commission, cast your votes.
Voting is closed.
All right, motion carries. The next item on this is for the request for consideration and motion for recommendation to the city council regarding a conditional use permit for O'Fallon Sports Complex. O'Fallon Playfield Commons LLC is the property owner for a food truck park. Members of the commission, do we have a motion regarding this item on the agenda?
Make a recommendation of approval based upon staff conditions, Howard.
Second, Hennessy.
All right, we have a motion and a second for a recommendation of approval to the city council regarding a conditional use permit for the food truck park. Members of the commission, cast your votes.
Voting is closed.
All right, motion carries. The next item is a request for consideration and motion of action on a conditional use permit for O'Fallon Sports Complex. O'Fallon Playfield Commons LLC is the property owner, and this is for the sale and service of alcoholic beverages by the drink related to the sports tourism overlay district. Do we have a motion regarding this item on the agenda?
I'm sure I have a question for staff regards to conditions six and seven. They really belong on this con...
Yeah, I think those were carried over from a previous report, so they don't need to be on there. I don't think we have an issue with them staying on there. I just, I guess gives us another avenue of making sure they follow the rules of their alcohol sales at the food truck park. So we can, we can take them off, but I think it's also fine if they stay on there. I think either way is fine, whatever you guys think you, you'd want to do.
I can tell you the applicant didn't have a problem with any of the conditional uses, so leave them on.
That condition, make a recommendation of approval based upon staff conditions, Howard.
Second, Boust.
All right, we have a motion and a second for an approval, a recommendation of approval for the conditional use permit. This is not a recommendation, this is just, uh, this is not a recommendation, so this will not be heard at the city council. So this is just a motion and a second for approval of the conditional use permit for O'Fallon Sports Complex, O'Fallon Playfield Commons for the sale and service of alcoholic beverages by the drink related to the sports tourism overlay district. Members of the commission, cast your votes.
Voting is closed.
All right, motion carries. The next item on the agenda is a request for consideration and motion for action on a site plan for O'Fallon Sports Complex. O'Fallon Playfield Commons, the property owner, and this is for the sports facility, hotel, and other uses within the sports tourism overlay district.
Madam Chair, I can make a motion for approval per staff recommendation with a change of item four, what Stephanie's gonna tell you.
Second, Wexler.
So item number, or condition number four would be changed to the following. All retaining walls on the site shall comply with Section 405.275 of the O'Fallon Municipal Code, and with respect to subsection B of such section, all retaining walls on the site shall either be, as designed, recommended, and determined appropriate by a geotechnical engineer, or shall not be placed closer to one another by a ratio of a minimum of two feet horizontal for every one foot of vertical height of wall.
That's what I said, wasn't it?
Something like that.
All right, we have a motion and a second for approval of the site plan for O'Fallon Sports Complex with the modification of the one condition on the staff report. This is for the sports facility, hotel, and other uses within the sports tourism overlay district. Members of the commission, cast your votes.
Voting is closed.
All right, motion carries. All right, so the first item this evening under new business is regarding Wing Haven Mastercard Hammock Road, the renewal, renewable energy project. This is a request for consideration and motion for action on a site plan for property on Hammock Road. Lutheran Church Extension Fund is the property owner for the proposed use of a renewable energy project, ground mounted solar panels. Do we have someone here to present this item on the agenda?
Good evening, Madam Chair and Chair of Members. My name is Andy Stancotti. I'm with BioStor Renewables. We are the developer of this renewable energy project on behalf of Mastercard for this development. I also have our electrical engineer and civil engineer with us as well. This project is obviously a huge benefit to Mastercard for their greenhouse gas emissions reduction goals that they have. The grid here in the Ameren Territory is the dirtiest grid that they actually have across all of their portfolio in the United States, and that with, in achieving their lofty greenhouse gas emission reduction goals, they need to add additional solar and battery storage to accommodate the greenhouse gas reduction. This project is using the adjacent parcel and attempting to use as much of the existing terrain, natural landscape, and fit the requirements that are outlined in the ordinances by the city of O'Fallon. We have spoken with the HOA from Kings Gate and, you know, willing to continue conversations with them to try and make this a win-win and, you know, looking forward to making it a successful project for the city as a whole.
All right, Mayor?
Andy, you did say that you talked with the HOA members. I really don't want to table this, but what I will do is, I don't know when you plan on starting construction, but what I will do is put a condition, if the rest of the commission doesn't want to table, doesn't want to table it, is to put a condition that you can't start construction until you sit down with the Kings Gate HOA and get all their concerns and questions answered.
Yep, that is definitely something we're willing to, you know, have included and work through that. You know, we obviously have several more construction grading permits to go through to get this approved, plenty of time to incorporate and meet with the HOA to discuss. We would obviously prefer to not delay this process right now, given that we have a lot of time.
I don't, I don't want to delay it either. That's why I'm, I'm saying that'll put the fire under you guys to meet with the Kings Gate, Kings Gate HOA before, you know, because I know you still got construction documents in and everything else, so to me that will give you guys time to get with that, if that's okay with Matt.
Matt out there, is that okay with you?
Not really.
Not really, but, okay, but, I mean, they, they won't be able to start construction until they get all the questions answered to you guys. So...
Yeah, right now, this isn't a public comment, so...
I know, it's my fault.
Okay.
Sorry. But I will put that condition on there.
Understood.
If the rest of this commission doesn't table it, so that's up to them.
All right, so I'd like to hear from, yes, Commissioner Lee?
A bit more of a technical question. So Mastercard already has some solar panels over their, I think it's their parking area. Adding acres more of it, is that something they need to just self-sustain and power that one site, or is that gonna end up putting a net surplus on the grid?
No, this, all of this power will be used behind their meter and is still being consumed. They use a lot of, of power there, and they will continue to grow in their power needs. And so this is really helps sustaining kind of a current level of power, and they're gonna continue to grow that facility. And this is one thing that's helping keep that facility there because of how dirty the power is. There is an alternate option out there of them having to move facilities, and so by being able to develop this here and put this much in for them, it helps kind of protect them into the future for, for their growing power needs.
Okay, have they made any other sort of considerations in terms of ways they can reduce their power usage beyond just saying, oh, we need to, you know, pull more?
Yeah, I can't speak to specifics, but I know that they have done, you know, energy conservation studies, and there are other measures that they are doing, but with this being a data center, you know, that consumes a lot of power. Data centers are consuming more, more power kind of year over year right now.
And kind of where I'm coming from with this is obviously I think the residents next door really don't want these solar panels there, but I'm wondering if there's more of a compromise where there's, you know, solar panels but a much smaller footprint.
Yeah, it wouldn't help achieve the goals that they're trying to achieve. We would look to try and, you know, screen any way possible. You know, as mentioned, we're, we're leaving a lot of existing vegetation and really currently exceeding what is required of us in both your ordinances as well as from a setback from the jurisdictional wetlands or the, the wetlands, the streams that are there. And so to create that buffer, we had that in mind as well as not flattening this entire piece of land and, you know, which would be ideal for us. We'd be able to build more, we'd be able to have different kind of row spacings and make this different, but we're using the terrain as much as we possibly can, given the accommodations that racking can kind of make going with the terrain. So trying to leave it in its natural state as much as possible and not just making this, you know, a flat development, that would have a little bit different look to it.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions. So as technology improves, is there an opportunity that, or a chance that these, these could change, that you would like be able to generate more power out of smaller panels or, I mean, do you, I mean, as somebody in the business, would you have any knowledge of, you know, what, what is foreseen in the future?
Yeah, so the technology has made quite significant advances over the last 10, 15 years. That has somewhat tapered off, like efficiency isn't doubling in kind of gains every year. It's, it's kind of plateauing. Solar panels themselves have become larger in order to generate more electricity. They haven't, they used to be 200 watts, now they're 500, 600, 700 watts, but it's just because they got bigger. It's not like the technology got so efficient. And so we don't really see that the panels themselves would get so efficient that this could be, you know, we'd be able to produce the same amount of energy in a tenth of their square footage, right? You know, something like that would require nuclear or, you know, some kind of technology you obviously don't want in that area as well. So I, to answer a little bit more directly, you know, I, I don't think there's anything commercially available that is a renewable energy source that, that could produce this amount of energy or anything close to it in a much smaller footprint.
So, and what about like the, you know, are they going to be dark or will they be, you know, lighter, you know, in terms of the color of the panels?
So the panels themselves are kind of a blue shade on the front, dark blue with a silver frame. The array itself will be mostly grass area. It will not have, you know, it'll be two access or an access road that kind of goes east and west and north and south mainly for fire access. But underneath the panels will be all vegetation, and the battery storage area will just be kind of simple white containers that will be off kind of hidden by the pond and closer to Mastercard's facility.
And those will be all stationary? They won't rotate or...
Correct.
They won't, okay. And, okay. I, I, we have solar panels on our house, and I know that, you know, some parts of the year, we just don't get it, like right now, we're getting nothing out of it, so. But this isn't probably the most ideal part of the country to get, have solar panels and get production out of it, but, but, you know, honestly, I, you know, we have them on our house, and we were concerned about what our neighbors would think, and we didn't. No one's made one comment to us about it, so.
Madam Chair? I would say one thing, if you do have solar panels on your house, what it's gonna cost you to put new shingles on your house, you're gonna have to remove all those solar panels to put shingles on your home. So a lot of people think that's a good thing. It is kind of good, not good. You can go down here to Tom Ginever and make a right turn and go down across from the ballpark, and there's an Ameren solar, solar panel field right there. Also know they built one up in Eolia, a major, I don't know how many panels are up there, but it's probably 100 acres if not more. Solar field, no. Solar power, solar generation, to me is, is better than the alternative, which a lot of communities or some communities are going to, which would be driven by wind turbines. I don't like either one of them. I'm, I'd be happy with burning coal. Get that dirty energy going. But the payback, and you know better than I do, on solar and especially wind turbines, takes a while, especially, also, we had Ameren and the federal government at one time giving subsidies to homeowners to go to solar panels. But with all this push to electric, electric vehicles, there's not enough grid available right now to power all the, if everybody went tomorrow to electric cars, we couldn't, we don't have enough electricity on the grid to do that. So I'm not totally opposed to it. I just don't want them in my backyard. They're ugly, okay? I'd rather have a nice tree. So I would say, when you talk to these good people, that you look at putting a little bit more of a buffer there, plant a few trees so that when they open their back door, they're not looking at four, 500 solar panels. And I don't, Mastercard, we, I appreciate them being in O'Fallon. They've been a great corporate neighbor, the mayor will attest to that. We don't want to tick off Mastercard, but we also want Mastercard to be a good neighbor.
Absolutely.
Just like State Farm.
And Mastercard is, they're committed to.
So tell them to be like State Farm and be a good neighbor.
Yes, Commissioner Lee?
One follow-up to, to sightlines to the solar panels. So, you know, obviously sunrise and sets in different parts of the sky throughout the year. It sounds like they're sitting above these panels elevation-wise. Is there any sort of guarantee in the way you can orient them that the reflections of the sun aren't gonna come off and, you know, be blind in them if they're on their deck in the evening?
Yeah, so the panels will be fixed facing south, and so the way that the housing develop, the HOA is, is looking at the, the site, it would be in a really late sunset, right, where the sun is very low in the sky, likely in the winter, where, and we can do a glaring analysis. I assume that will be something that the HOA will want to do. We are happy to do glaring studies to show kind of incidence of glare, when that will occur, and how many times in a year that would occur. The panels themselves are made with an anti-reflective coating. Obviously, they're trying to absorb light rather than reflect it, and so that helps with any incidence of glare. Furthermore, there's a pond that's right there that the FAA and all other federal government kind of bodies that used to study solar panels like around airports kind of stopped doing these glare studies because they said, you know, wet grass has a glare, right? And we can't stop that in ponds and glass on buildings, and so the natural features in the world have just as much of a glare often as... And so the natural features in the world have just as much of a glare often as solar panels or if not more. And so they actually stopped requiring these studies. We still do them at times, like in these instances. And so happy to do that to show kind of what the results are of that.
Thank you.
Yes, Commissioner Boust.
Madam Chair, thank you. On your fence, so you're talking about putting a fence around it at least where the residence side is, will that cover the height of the solar panels? Like meaning if they're, right now, there's no leaves on the trees so they can see clearly through the forest, right? But when all those trees are down, will they see solar panels above the fence or will they just see a fence?
The top edge of the panels would be about the size of the fence, but the fence height would have to be probably 60 to 70 feet tall because they're perched up kind of on a hill. Some of the site is, is level with them, but it does kind of slope down towards their, their backyards where it's very dense forest, but, you know, the winter, yes, leaves, when the leaves fall, there will be likely some places where they can see it. And so I don't think that fence would be anything that we can solve and it makes it tough from a landscape because even if we put trees down there, I'm not sure we're really going to accomplish much on our side of the, of the site, right? Because of the variation in height from.
That makes sense. I just wonder if there's some type of greenery or something that you could look at that would get at least some of the view away, so it's not as much in the wintertime, like an evergreen tree or some type of, I think some get like 20 foot or something like that, which would aid, I think, in the view for the residents on the backside as you meet with them. I don't know if that's an option for you to consider planting that as you're taking out quite a bit of trees in this process to put in this solar.
Yep.
Members of the Commission, yes, Commissioner Howard.
Thank you, ma'am. Has there been any thought to roundabouts at the end of the Stubbs Streets?
At the end of the roads internal to the?
Yes, sir.
Yes, there will be for fire access with appropriate radii for fire trucks, for the largest vehicle that Wentzville is the district that serves this, this site.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
So David, I have a question. So this is zoned, a high-tech corridor district. I mean, does that in, in the ordinance anywhere talk about solar panel farms? I mean, how does, does it address that?
Yeah, we have a separate section in the code just for renewable energy.
Okay.
And it does permit, it does allow the ground-mounted solar panels to be just a site plan through planning and zoning. So there's a whole separate section. It includes, you know, that's same kind of deal when Mastercard came out there, roof, roof-mounted solar carports, that was a site plan. So it's actually just a separate section in there.
And, yeah, and this is obviously just a, a site plan, so there's no, I mean, they're within the zoning requirements to, in this zoning.
Yep.
All right. Members of the Commission, anyone else have any questions or comments regarding this item on the agenda or do we have a motion regarding this item?
Madam Chair, make a motion with staff recommendations for approval.
Can we add the condition?
Add the condition that the mayor said for sure. Thank you.
Second, another read.
Do we have a, a time?
They can't start construction until they've met with the HOA and get everything taken care of.
So I would say if we're going to have that condition on there, that we clarify it by saying that your construction will be, can't start until you've met with the HOA and discussed any possible.
Yeah, we're willing to work with them kind of within reason of what's feasible.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval of the site plan for the property on Hammock Road. Lutheran Church Extension Fund is the property owner for the proposed use of renewable energy project, ground mounted, mounted solar panels. Members of the Commission, cast your votes. Are you voting?
Voting is closed.
All right, motion carries. All right, the next item on the agenda this evening is regarding Caledonia Flats at 211 This will be a public comment and on this we have a conditional use permit for Caledonia Flats to allow for residential dwellings in a non-residential zoned structure. We have a request for consideration and motion for action on a conditional use permit for the sale and service of alcoholic beverages by The Drink. And we have a motion for action on the site plan for Caledonia Flats for a multifamily development with first-floor retail. Do we have someone here to present this item on the agenda?
Good evening, members of the Commission. My name is Steve Valentine with Lombardo Homes, address 4 Research Park, that's in St. Charles, 63304. I am here tonight to present a project that some of you may remember. We actually brought this project back through, back summertime of last year. It passed unanimously here, got to council and it did not pass. Subsequently, we met with Councilman Bibb and Councilman Cascala, the, it's in their ward, Ward 3, and really just kind of pinned down why we didn't pass. We had met prior and thought we were kind of in good shape. They were able to clearly articulate two things that they were looking for. And so what I'm going to present tonight addresses those two things and I'll just jump to what they were. Specifically, their concerns were in regards to the commercial that's in this project, which again, we'll, we'll get to in my presentation, that it was kind of an if come. We didn't have businesses identified and didn't have the, the commitment that they were looking for to make sure that, that those were going to be in place. And then another one that came up in the conversation was they would, they wanted a, a owner-occupied component to the project. They did not want just a strict for rent, so we have complied with that as well. And with that, I will go through the slides here. We are doing this in conjunction with Kukar. Kukar is the company that also you guys might remember, the Cambria Hotel, which again, you'll see in the slides here. We are also partnering with them on that project and it is immediately adjacent to this parcel. So these are our kind of sister projects and we're looking for some synergies between both of these projects. Kukar does, as it calls out here, has been working for over 30 years in the hospitality industry. They own and operate hotels and apartment complexes throughout the country. And again, it's the same firm that is constructing the, the Cambria Hotel adjacent. It is a mixed-use project with commercial and parking on the first floor. There are a total of 96 apartment units and then 13 penthouse for-sale condominiums on the top floor. The project adds 232 parking spaces. 26 of those in particular are within the building. They are covered spaces and they are two spaces per, for the 13 for-sale condominiums. So each of the buyers of condos will have their own dedicated covered parking spaces. There is over 6,000 square feet of commercial space and we do have users identified for those spaces and I will go through those as well. And most importantly, and the same was true in our last presentation, the city's fiscal impact analysis did come out not positive for this project. The, the net ratio was a 10.5 to 1. We're looking for something greater than 1 for the life of the project in the analysis window. It's favorable $11.7 million. And that was one of the things that was also, you know, critical in, in my meetings with Steve and Nathan in regards to the project was that we maintained a favorable fiscal, fiscal impact when we made these modifications to the project. This is the site, kind of wedged in here between the future Cambria Hotel, the Baron Swim School and the Mobile on the Run gas with just a little further south, the Rush Soccer Complex. This is the proposed site plan. Oops, excuse me. We've, there, there was an odd-shaped parcel kind of wedged between the swim school and the mobile on the run that we have utilized 100% of it to, to get some additional parking spaces as well as along the outer road here and then, you know, adjacent to the building for a total of 232. Again, that includes within this portion of the building covered spaces. This is the outside rendering and I know there was a, a comment earlier, another project about them looking similar around town. This one was intended. Again, it's immediately adjacent to the Cambria Hotel, which, I can sort of jump to that. This was the approved rendering for that project and as the mayor had indicated, these types of exterior elevation concepts and colors do go through an approval process with the hotel chains. So Cambria has, has seen this and it is approved. We're looking to, again, make this look like a unified complex. And so we've used the same architect and same color scheme. There's some details on the elevation. Jumping next to the apartment component of the project, this would be a typical apartment living space. They are a combination of one and two-bedroom apartments. These are the layouts associated with each, one-bedroom, two-bedroom. This is the floor plan for an apartment floor. Here is the mix in square footage of each, the two-bedroom, running just short of, of 1,250 and 835 for the single bedroom. The mix is primarily the single bedroom. And we'll get to the condos here in a second. This is a typical, a typical living space inside one of the condo units. This is the layouts for the condos. They do vary in size. There are three sizes of condos out of the, the 13 units and kind of almost better be seen here. The smallest, just, just over 1,150 square feet. The, the primary or the bulk of the units are this 1,500, 1,550 square footage layout and then we have one large bookend unit at just, just south of 1,700 square feet. The lobby, which is on the, the first floor of the development, does have a two-elevator bank. One of the elevator banks is exclusive for, again, the, the penthouse for-sale condominiums so that, that they are, you know, they're up at the sixth floor and will have at least dedicated access instead of hoofing it up the stairs unless they are trying to get their steps in. The, the lobby will have a mail kiosk and package pickup delivery area and the leasing management and, and operation however, will be, will be located across the, the street in the, inside the Cambria Hotel. So the same operating structure, the agent will, will actually reside over in the offices at, at the Cambria. The apartment and condo residents will have full access to the amenities in the hotel. So there's a comprehensive gym space over there as well as swimming pool. And then, you know, obviously everybody would be free to use the restaurants, but the, the pool and the fitness center will be included for, for these residents. One of the things that I didn't point out in the parking area, there's a slide on the pool and gym, within the parking area, if I got a slide, here we go. We do, we have also included a bike storage room. There are, you know, certainly good trails all around O'Fallon and then this parcel in particular, being close to bush wildlife, we're trying to, you know, continue to encourage that and we are working on some trails and some other projects to, to continue that connectivity throughout the city. The breakdown of the square footage down here on the first floor, the bulk of the commercial space is to a virtual shooting simulator, which I have some slides on here later. And then also in the space is a restaurant. The kitchen space is a shared kitchen for both the virtual shooting as well as obviously for the restaurant. So virtual shooting, for those of you that, that are gamers, I don't maybe have to explain it much, but for, for me, I've never done virtual shooting, but I've seen it in arcades. It's, it's, it's somewhere where, as the, as it was presented to me, you can go and, and have fun without any, have fun shooting guns without any of the dangers of shooting guns. So this is in a location, right, as I mentioned, it's adjacent to bush wildlife. There's.
Your, your 10 minutes are up.
All right, I will motor through unless you want me to stop. There will be a retail component within the, the shooting area. These are just some slides of, of what the restaurant would look like. The landscaping, again, I did want to point out, we are intending to use the exact same tree package that was approved for the hotel. So again, we have some continuity throughout the area. Garbage enclosure, thank you. Ooh, I got close.
All right, thank you. All right, members of the Commission, does anyone have any questions or comments for the presenter? Yes, Commissioner Boust.
Thanks, Madam Chair. So I just did the math, you got 14 parking spots available to people using the virtual shooting in the restaurant?
14.
So you had a 232, 26 of those spots are for the condominium residents. If you had two cars per unit, that's 96 units times two, two vehicles. You follow my math so far?
So the, the bulk of the apartments are, are actually one?
One-bedroom?
One-bedroom.
Okay, so you're, so.
I'm, I'm at, I think, 88, I believe. I got it, I got the stat here.
What my fear is, is I like the way it looks, I like the way it's possible feel of it, but I also don't want it to feel like the streets of St. Charles. I don't know if anybody's been over there when the drurys got people in it and trying to park back there and you got condominiums on the backside? Not a fun place to park, but the facility's nice to use. And my fear is the same thing here is that if parking's not adequate, we're really using a lot of this shared space in that, that complex to satisfy several facilities. And I think long-term people will get frustrated and then we'll have empty retail and not the customers to keep.
So the entire complex per the covenants falls under a shared parking agreement?
I know, I get that. We've been through that the last time.
So I, well, I can't, I, so I can't break those as far as assigning some to a particular entity?
I understand that. My, I'm just pointing out that the concern that I still have is the parking element and to make sure that the restaurant and the shooting range has enough to adequately stay in business based on that area.
So I know.
I know that they can park over on the movie theater and they can walk, but we're all human. And it's cold this weekend and nobody's walking from the movie theater up there to the shooting range.
So, trying to find a slide that maybe best depicts it. While we do, we have been working with Hanson Professional Services who the city dictates we have to use for our. we have to use for our parking analysis. I spoke with Todd as recently as today. He does not feel that we have an issue, and he'll be issuing his report here shortly. That being said, I did, as recently as this afternoon, get a contact phone number for MoDOT. MoDOT has, for those of you who know the area, an extensive amount of right-of-way between DD and Barron's Swim School. There's a, quite frankly, a bunch of wasted ground there, and so I've been encouraged in, when I got this, this contact's name and number, I'm going to reach out to her about investigating whether or not that ground can be available specifically for parking. I didn't have an answer for that, so I wasn't gonna bring it up, since we're really talking about parking here. We do feel that that's wasted ground there. Mobile on the Run has said the same thing, they always wondered why all that ground was there. That's who I got the contact name from. So it's nothing I can guarantee at this point, but all I can say is that we are pursuing some additional space there as well, because we just think that that ground was probably misallocated a little bit.
Thank you, I just want to make sure, it's a big investment to put in, and the last thing I want to see is parking be the struggle to keep a tenant in the retail space.
We agree.
Nogger, did you?
Hi, Carolyn. Hi, good afternoon. Couple of questions about your condos you guys are gonna have up there. What's, what's, what's the sales price of those condos gonna be?
So our target market is, we don't have any pricing finalized right now. Our goal going in is to be able to transact sub $400,000. We feel like a penthouse in that area, if it can transact in the threes, even if it's in the high threes, we will have a very good, and we're only looking for 13 buyers, but we'll have a very good success, and so that's, that's internally where we're targeting, being able to offer those.
We, what about the mail? Where are they gonna pick up their mail at?
So the mail is, there's a mail kiosk and drop-off area in the lobby, if I can find the slide here. So this central, I don't know if this is showing up on your screen here, so this central area in the lobby, not only is the elevator banks here, but this, this area here will have mail kiosks as well as a package parcel, Amazon delivery, drop-off boxes for the residents to-
So there'll be a front desk, then, somebody attending, attending that front desk, or?
So this is not intended to be a full-time staffed lobby. The leasing and operations will actually be run out of offices in the hotel adjacent.
I understand, thank you.
Commissioner Seymour?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think the whole reason that I chair here was just for those two issues that were brought up with the city council, is that correct?
I mean, that, that, those were the two things, two items that were really articulated to us that, why it was not passed favorably in council.
And you addressed those issues, because this is going right back to city council again.
Yeah, no, I, I met with both councilmen and some additional councilmen subsequently, just to verify that, that these two changes are enough to satisfy what the concerns were last go.
The problem I have, and I have to echo the sentiment, is, and it has been even when they were here before with this project, and that's parking. Parking is a major issue. I've seen it on, over at Twin Chimneys where my daughter lives, that's a parking issue, and that subdivision has been completed 20 years ago, I think, I don't know. But anyway, parking is an issue, and parking will remain an issue. To me, it made the situation worse by having owner-occupied units or penthouses, because to me, if you have somebody graduating from college or whatever, and you have a bunch of kinfolk coming in, where are they gonna all park at? You're gonna have half of them parking across the street? You know what I mean? That whole complex of parking is an issue. I would like, I would very much like to see you get some of that MoDOT right-of-way turned into parking, that would definitely help. And as far as those people that are paying $400,000 plus for a penthouse apartment, I'm pretty sure they're gonna demand some kind of private parking or assigned parking or-
Well, they do, because theirs are shown here, they're actually within the building footprint, so they have a, because it's not part of the surface parking, it does not fall under the shared parking for, for the entire complex. They will each have two assigned bays within the first floor of the building itself.
That's a, that's a good thing. Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right, yes, Commissioner Link?
Madam Chair, a quick question on the for-sale units. Is there a regulation in there that would prohibit those owners from trying to re-lease those out, defeating the purpose of having an owner-occupied unit?
So, interesting question. I did receive a call from Councilman Bibb on Monday this week, Monday this week, not only about the condominiums, but also about the apartments, and wanting to further clarify kind of the stay durations, and so we're addressing both of those right now, we've kind of got some back and forth going on. So for the condominiums in particular, those were certainly more comfortable on a much longer lease, if it were somebody who bought it and then say had a short-term, say one-year assignment overseas, but didn't want to sell their property, they wanted to be able to come back to it and then be able to lease that out. Now, we won't be leasing those out, so that is, I think, in one of the conditions that's in the packet here. So that part is for sure, as far as what the indentures will allow, I think for the condos, we were kind of settling on probably around a year minimum, so if somebody, you know, was traveling for a work assignment, that they could not, they wouldn't be forced to sell their property. As far as the apartments concerned, we're actually still kind of going back and forth on what the right number for that is. Part of the reason is, we're also been in talks with Mastercard, trying to find something that is a suitable short-term, you know, when they have, when they have a work assignment, that's say a three- or six-month assignment, where we could have something that might be potentially available for them to use. So it would certainly eliminate, I think one of the concerns was the whole, the real short-term kind of Airbnb-style stuff, and we're okay eliminating that, but we are trying to find something that's certainly less than the year requirement that we're talking about for the condominiums, for two reasons. One, again, kind of like that, the Mastercard situation, where you might have somebody who wants a shorter, shorter stay, and then in particular, we build homes, and our typical gap runs four to five months, right, where somebody is out of their residence and waiting for their new home to be constructed. So we're trying to, we're trying to settle on something probably around 90 days, I would think, is probably where we'll settle. I think we asked for 60, and I don't think that was long enough for Councilman Bibb, but I think we'll probably settle at 90 days.
Yeah, I think that's good, you know, obviously, having a clause in there where if you have, you know, certain circumstances, like you said, military reassignment, you don't want to have to sell your unit, but certainly prohibiting things like Airbnb short-term rentals, and then, once again, anybody just trying to defeat the purpose of owner-occupied, as long as you have something in there that, you know, has a minimum for our rental or leasing period, I think that's, that's good.
Yeah, quite frankly, right, so not always the case, but in the case of this, we have a hotel right across the street, so we don't want Airbnbs right next door, we want to rent rooms, so there's business reasons for us to also not want to allow that.
Thank you.
All right, this is a public, a public hearing, so we have one person who's completed a comment card, Mr. Dino?
Thank you very much, members of the commission, my name is R. C. A.C. Dino, City Public Advocate. I'm opposed to this project. This project went from the summer that was pretty, it was hard to stomach because of the parking, but it was amicable and workable, and now this project has gone south. We're cutting the sales tax revenues and the potential economic impact, and so I have to be against this project. First of all, we are very heavy, top-heavy on residential. As you paid, as the city council paid $136,000 to a consultant for longevity and our comprehensive plan, we have 70% residential, whether it's through apartments, condominiums, villas, or single-family residential dwellings. 20% is for commercial opportunities, and the rest is industrial users throughout our city, so we're very top-heavy residential. We need to start looking at a mixed-use and real economic development, real opportunities to generate sales tax for our future, to pay for city services. This, in my opinion, this plan is not a fair solution. This project needs a lot of work. For example, the parking is brought up by a few commissioners, you know, you take just 1.5 cars for the amount of units that are here, and that's 164 cars right there. You know, you gotta build into the plan expectations that there's gonna be visitors for these apartments, whether they're one-bedroom, two-bedroom, or a condominium. What are we gonna do for guests and employees? I'm sure that both the 7,600 shooting simulator, square-foot shooting simulator, bar and restaurant is probably gonna have anywhere from 15 to 20 employees. You have to have places for them to park, you know, and I would expect with that square footage, you're gonna generate 75 to 100 bodies that are gonna eat and drink and use the simulator, and then the 2,500 in the breakfast and lunch facility, again, where are you gonna park the employees and where are you gonna park the guests? So in my opinion, I believe that this lot, this parcel, looks to be over 300 parking spaces that need to be built to even be considered by the Planning and Zoning Commission. Unless there is substantial commercial investment, which they've reduced by three-fourths to half, from over 12,000 square foot down to just about 10,000 square foot, we're losing our economic ability and opportunities. So unless there's substantial commercial investment to build our economy and support our required city services for sales taxes, this project is reducing majorly the square footage of the retail and commercial development opportunities. We, as a commission and as a city, are shooting our foot and going against our economic opportunity availability. We are robbing the neighborhood and our communities-
Mr. Dino?
... and sales taxes to pay for-
Your time's up.
-essential public services. So I said each commissioner vote no on this application.
All right, that is the only comment card that we have completed at this time, so we will close the public comment section of this item and ask the petitioner to come forward. Do you have any other, do you have a-
Well, I just want to thank Mr. Dino for actually pointing out something that I slightly missed in my presentation. One of the advantages of the commercial solution of the Buttermilk Biscuit Restaurant, and particularly why we proposed that solution, is it is a breakfast and lunch operation, whereas the shooting facility is more of a afternoon and evening, thus eliminating that overlap of parking needs. Additionally, the hotel has a restaurant in it that also primarily services kind of a lunch and dinner crowd. We're looking to encourage anybody for breakfast at the hotel to head over to Buttermilk Biscuit. So from a parking standpoint, we feel like that that's actually an advantage for the area, and that was confirmed, you know, with, with Todd over at Hanson's Professional Services, that was a good idea to help kind of minimize the impact of having those, those commercial spaces there, but not having the peak hours overlap with one another. A couple of other things that I wanted to point out, since he was mentioning, you know, the impact overall on O'Fallon, again, the fiscal impact study did come back favorable, we already kind of went over that, but this site also has already been looked at and addressed from a stormwater perspective, from a traffic perspective. MoDOT has done the improvements, they've put in the signalization, the roads are widened, so a lot of this infrastructure is already here. To not take advantage of it and have it continue to sit vacant is actually more of a disservice, I feel, to the city of O'Fallon, especially when the number, I'll let the numbers speak for themselves, some of those, I, we chose to not get into it further with city staff, because it did come back favorable, but we feel like that even the numbers that are within that are conservative in nature. So for those reasons, I encourage the commission to vote in the affirmative for this project.
Any other comments or questions for many of the commissioners?
I have a question on the area that you said is part of the MoDOT right-of-way. So that owned by MoDOT?
Correct.
So they actually own it?
Correct.
Have you ever done something like that before?
Certainly.
Contacted them and take-
Sometimes they're open to it, and sometimes they're not. I will say, either way, it's routinely not a fast process, but we're not in a tremendous rush here. This, you know, this entire project will take, just as similar applicants have said, months to go through plan approvals, and then, and then another development period of roughly five months, so certainly well within that time will be, I'm gonna initiate conversations immediately, now that I have their contact number.
So based on your experience, you think-
Fifty-fifty. Sometimes they're open to it, sometimes they're not, if they have other reasons.
There's nothing about the character of the land or where it's at?
So I think we do have a very compelling case here. This, for those of you that know that area, the linear distance from where Double D is to kind of the toe of the slope, is quite substantial. There's a significant amount of space there, and, you know, from a, any other conclusion we can reach, whether it's stormwater, sightline, safety, there's plenty of workable space back there. We're not looking to acquire it all, we're just looking to acquire a portion, so we can get another row of parking back there.
So, I mean, how much of substantial, how much of an increase in parking would you see out of that space?
It would depend on how much ground that it would be willing to give up. I, if we get a double-stacked row of 15 to 20 units, it's 30 to 40 additional parking spaces, so certainly material.
All right, so any other questions or comments? If not, we have three items on this, regarding this item on the agenda, to vote on. So the first one being the request for consideration, a motion for recommendation to the city council regarding a conditional use permit for Caledonia Flats, 211 Rushway. Caledonia Real Estate LLC is the contract purchaser to allow residential dwellings in a non-residential zoned structure. We have a motion regarding this item on the agenda.
Motion to approve for that recommendation, Mr. Charlie Nogger.
Second, Henry.
You said, I'm sorry, Charlie, you said that so fast, with, with staff recommendations?
Yes.
Oh, okay, all right, thank you. All right, we have a motion and a second for a recommendation of approval to the city council regarding the conditional use permit to allow the residential dwellings in a non-residential zoned structure. Members of the commission, cast your votes. Voting is closed. All right, so we have a recommendation of approval to the city council for the conditional use permit for Caledonia Flats at 211 Rushway to allow the residential dwellings in the non-residential zoned structure. And the next item is a request for consideration and motion of action on a conditional use permit for Caledonia Flats, 211 Rushway. Caledonia Real Estate LLC is the contract purchaser for the sale and service of alcoholic beverages by the drink. Do we have a motion regarding this item on the agenda?
A motion to recommend approval, Link?
Second, Henry.
All right, we have a recommendation of, a approval, a motion for approval on the conditional use permit for Caledonia Flats for the sale and service of alcoholic beverages by the drink. Members of the commission, cast your votes. Members of the commission, cast your votes. I'm pushing the button.
Uh-oh.
There we go.
Voting is closed.
All right. All right. Motion carries. The next item on the agenda... this item for... to vote on is a request for consideration and motion for action on a site plan for Caledonia Flats, 211 Rushway. Caledonia Real Estate is the contract purchaser for a multifamily development with first-floor retail. Do we have a motion regarding this item?
Motion to approve of staff recommendations, Honoree.
Second, Charlie Nager.
All right. We have a motion and a second for approval of the site plan for Caledonia Flats, 211 Rushway, for the multifamily development with first-floor retail. Members of the commission, cast your votes. Commissioner Heath, is it working?
Heath pushing.
Yeah.
Voting is closed.
All right. Motion carries. All right. And this will be at the next city council meeting, is that correct, Mayor, for the use permit? Okay. All right. The next item on the agenda, the staff has requested that these two items be tabled until the February 6, 2025, meeting. These... This is where the Doghouse Bar and Grill. It's a public comment for a conditional use permit for the Doghouse Bar and Grill at 300 Sandrin Street, and the conditional use permit for the property at 300 Sandrin Street for the sale and service of alcoholic beverages by the drink. Do we have a motion to table these two items?
I'm with Howard.
Seymour.
All right. We have a motion and a second to table until the February 6, 2025, meeting, the two items regarding the Doghouse Bar and Grill. Members of the commission, cast your votes.
Voting is closed.
All right. This item will be tabled until next month's meeting, the February 6, 2025. Yes.
I did not vote no.
Did you get that, Tracy?
So you're going to change that?
Yes.
Some of us older citizens up here.
No, there's also A for abstain, so... The next item on the agenda this evening is regarding the Harvest at Hopewell community signage. This is a request for consideration and motion of action to reconsider a condition of approval for a conditional use permit for Harvest at Hopewell, Elite Development Services is the applicant, regarding this condition of approval for community signage. Do we have someone to present this item?
Good evening. My name's Mike Birding. I'm with Sterling Engineering, and we're here tonight on behalf of Elite Development to request this reconsideration of that condition of approval. The signage package was included with the amenity plan, and the locations were shown on that. So we're not changing anything with regard to locations or how the signage looks and how the signage package look. What we ran into is that we need to have it specified that the setback from the right-of-way is 10 feet. A lot of the areas are backing up to common ground, and there is areas where there's a strip to set these signs in, these village signs, and they are 10 feet wide. So we can't get 10 feet from the right-of-way and then 10 feet from a lot, something less than that, depending upon location. But we do an individual plot plan for each one, and everything is noted and dimensioned on that. So we'd ask that you make the text amendment of the consideration for approval to allow that 10 feet from the right-of-way be the standard. Then I'll answer any questions you have. If staff wants to clarify that anymore, they...
Commissioner Howard?
I'm sure. Exactly how many positions are we talking about here?
Well, there's 13 village signs. 12 of them have already been applied for, basically. The last one is in the Phase 3 area. So we haven't developed a record plat for it yet. The Phase 1, obviously, and then Phase 2 record plats are in, and we know the extent of what's going... you know, what room we have to work with.
Well, you only have one sign that's not meeting the requirements?
No, no, no. It's the... Each one has a little bit different situation with regard to where its placement is. But all of them, we can meet that 10 feet from the right-of-way.
I guess I'm confused as to... There's just too much variable. We don't know what I'm really approving.
Well, the text amendment basically is a condition of the approval of the first time of the amenity package, and the signage was included with that. And the real difference is we're spelling out that we're going to be a distance of 10 feet from the right-of-way, which gives room for the sign itself and clearance from the right-of-way, and then the sidewalk is, in many cases, is within the right-of-way. So we're meeting the sidewalk setback. But then there's also a requirement currently that says you have to be 10 feet from a lot line, and we can't get that. But that only occurs on the corner lots, and then we could get a disclosure statement from the future homeowner that there's a sign there close to their lot, and that sign is maintained by the HOA.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Seymour.
Is that a city requirement?
The... What's that? The... It's my understanding that the 3-foot from the curbing sidewalk is required per code. The 10 feet from the property line is also a requirement of the code. But as your staff had mentioned earlier, that's part of this variation process with the... with the... I guess it's a CUP for the community sign.
Well, I think we're trying to understand, can you not change the sign to meet the code?
No.
Or are you asking us to change the code to meet your sign? Because we can't change the code. It's not the point of adjustment.
No. It's... And maybe if I could get staff's help a little bit with regard to...
David, can you intercede here a little bit?
Yeah. So all of these signs are placed in common ground. They can meet the 10 feet from the right-of-way line, but then to do that, they're not able to meet 10 feet from the individual lots that are on the other side of that common ground. So this would allow them to be far enough off the road, and then they would just... some spots, it's like 8-foot from the other adjacent lots, or, you know, things like that. So that's what changing this condition would do, would give them that flexibility to keep those signs away from the road. They'd just be a little bit closer to the individual lots.
In most of the areas, these signs back up to common ground, the bigger common ground area. But there are a few cases where they're on a corner, and they're in common ground, but it's adjacent to a lot. And, you know, the signage might be that. It's a post sign.
Can you move the sign somewhere else to meet that requirement?
Not meet both. No. Not... And they're... Obviously, they're in the intersections to identify a neighborhood.
Can you change the composition of the sign? Make it smaller, or change the footprint, or put it on a pole, or...
Well, it is already. It's a pole-type of sign. It's got a concrete... Well, it's got a concrete footing, but the... like a 2-foot stone veneer, and then a post that has a mast arm with a metal sign hanging on it.
Mayor?
Ethan, staff's all right with this, right?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
So is that... I mean, you just mentioned something about notifying the homeowner that's adjacent to it? Is that...
Well, just the property owner that buys the lot, the corner lot that where the sign would occur near that corner lot, then we could do a disclosure with them.
So you would just disclose it? Because if they came back later and said, hey, you didn't meet city code, they need to... you want to make them aware that...
And they're aware of the condition they bought the house with the...
Right.
With the understanding that it's closer than 10 feet.
So let me explain. Now, we're not talking about putting it on the future homeowner's property. It's not going to be in their property.
No, that's correct.
Okay. So the homeowners association would be responsible for taking care of it, maintaining the sign, and that will not fall on any homeowner?
That's correct.
So it'll either be in the easement on that... in front of that house, or where the homeowners association would be responsible for.
Yeah. It'll be in the common ground strip that's adjacent to the roadway.
I think I get what you're asking for.
Yes. Commissioner Link?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I mean, just a comment, why not make the signs smaller? You know, being... I'm the president of an HOA. The last thing I want to do is have to replace large, expensive signs at some point. So, you know, why not just size them down a couple feet?
Well, there is a detail of the two types of signs. There's village signs, which are exactly that. They're pole-mounted signs with one pole at a location that's 10 feet at least from the right-of-way. And then it has a mast arm at the top that holds a metal sign that identifies the neighborhood they're about to enter. The other... There's two typical entry monuments, but those are out by Deer Road and out by Hopewell.
I guess the question's still like, are the signs already made, or can they just not be, you know, manufactured to be small?
Well, still, you're measuring from the middle of the sign, right? I mean, the post is a... I can't remember if it's a 4-by-4. It's... You really can't make it any smaller. And regardless, if you could make the sign smaller, it's still being measured from the center of the post out to the right-of-way.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Mike, you know, you said you're going to mention it, you know, have it something to the property owner, that they're aware of it. Something's got to be in that paperwork, because if I buy that lot today and sell it in two years, future buyer needs to know about it. So something's got to be in that paperwork for that lot that says ABC, or whatever it's got to be.
Right. And that's part of the disclosure. That's my understanding that...
I just want it in that paperwork that, you know, people buy and sell houses every day.
Yeah.
So at least the first person that buys that lot's going to know about it, but is the third person going to know about it? Something's got to be in that paperwork that goes along with that lot.
Yeah.
How do you do that? Is that a...
Well, I understand it's got to be on the title, but, you know, when you go buy a house, how many times do you read every piece of paper that you're signing? But just so long as it's on the plot or something...
Okay.
That doesn't come back to you guys or come back to the city.
We can do that.
Thank you.
Commissioner Howard, did you have a comment? Okay.
Stephanie, how is that accomplished? Is that at the recorder's office, or does it have to be at the recorder's office to be...
Well, the sign is going to be in common ground anyway. And so you could either include it in just a note on the legal description, you know, when you're conveying the deed, so then it'll automatically be picked up each time the property sells. You could also have some type of notification that records, that attaches to the property, either way.
Okay. So you understand what she's saying regarding that? So...
All right. Does anyone else have any questions or comments? Not? Do we have a motion regarding this item?
Due to staff's recommendation, approve the conditional approval to eliminate the 3-foot, but keeping the 10-foot minimum. Since he's already said we can use the 10-foot. Now, what you said?
10-foot to the right-of-way.
All we're doing is, you know, giving variations, allowing this lot disclosure, instead of forcing him to take 3-foot. What the mayor said.
But are we adding a condition?
We're not adding any of that.
Okay.
He's making a motion for approval per staff recommendations, period.
Okay. All right. We have a motion. Do we have a second regarding this item?
Second, Heath.
All right. We have a motion and a second to... for approval for the conditional use permit for Harvest at Hopewell regarding the change to the requirements and the setbacks for the signage per staff recommendations. Members of the commission, cast your votes.
Voting is closed.
All right. Motion carries. The next item on the agenda this evening is a consent calendar, but there are no items for discussion this month. Then after that, on the agenda, we have a city council action update. Mayor, is that you? David?
Yeah, we had two things that went from P&amp;Z last month that went to the council and got voted on. One was the veterinarian clinic down off of Waterbury that was approved, and then the final plan for the residential subdivision, Strawberry Farm, off of Mexico, that was also approved.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is an elevation update for Harbor Freight. Is that you, David, or Ethan?
Yeah. So Harbor Freight is going into the old shop and safe where Rosalitas is currently under construction. When Rosalitas came through, they didn't have that other tenant figured out. We now know it's Harbor Freight, and they have provided us with a new elevation. You can see the existing end they proposed in that attachment. They're now putting in a new entryway and adding some of their colors to it. So that's all.
All right. All right. With that, we will adjourn this evening's... the January 2, 2025 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting.